I'm going to call this workshop of the City Council together. This is not a public hearing, this is, as I said, a workshop for the City Council to review the capital improvement project budgets that we have, looking out to the out-years. It is informational for us and informational for the general public. And I will now pass it off to City Mayor.
You know, members of the council, Tim Thompson is here to do a presentation, which is up on your screen here, and then during the meeting, that will run up if he needs to add anything, which I don't think he does, at least at this point, and I'll try to keep quiet and let Tim get through the analysis.
Can I jump in and just kind of make a brief statement?
Sure.
I think it's important for us, as we review the CIP, to understand that the CIP is in many regards a wish list. The City Council places things on the CIP, they move around as priorities change, and this is an opportunity to take a look at how past councils have prioritized things and kind of discuss what this group's priorities are, this council. And so just keep in mind that, you know, none of the things in the CIP are set in stone. You know, things move around all the time, push back because we feel we can't afford to do that at this time, move forward because we feel that it's important, that there's a pressing reason to do it. So that's kind of the context I'd just like to set as we start this review.
Right, so if you ever get questioned about how are we ever going to afford all these things, the City Council has never looked at from the standpoint of you are going to afford all these things over the next 10 years. It's just keeping priorities in front of you, they move back, as the mayor said, they move back and forth as opportunities arise, you may see a grant program that opens up, or a partner comes forward who wants to do something, and you work with them to actually move something up or back depending on what's going on, or there's a new challenge in the community that, you know, may not have been thought of three or four years ago, so it's just, it's, there's a whole lot of flexibility involved.
Mr. Thompson.
How often do these take place?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask, how often does this then take place? So we, how often will these check-ins on this topic?
Every single year, through the capital budget discussion. But typically, but typically for a workshop like this, you only do it when there's a whole bunch of new councilors involved, because once you've been through the budget a couple times, you'll know what the projects are, you know why they are where they are. It's just really, we thought, talking to the mayor, that because you have a whole bunch of new folks, it'd be good to kind of get everybody up to speed, and that's, you'll know what's going on.
Counselor Flood.
Do you roll this exercise?
No, Counselor, this is a roll call, you mean?
Take notes.
See who's present?
Uh...
I did.
It's a workshop, it's a workshop rather than a formal meeting, so...
You're credited for being here.
We know that you're president. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, Mr. Thompson, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Curry.
We were not sent this presentation, correct? Okay, I was looking in our agenda, there were no attachments of any kind. Okay, thank you.
This presentation was being worked on until about 4:00 this afternoon.
Not criticizing, just making sure I didn't miss something that I should be looking at, thank you.
I have every intent of making sure that it is sent out to all the councilors and the mayor after the presentation is completed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thompson.
Your Honor, members of the council, thank you. For those, again, Tim Thompson, I'm the Assistant Director of Community Development. One of my primary responsibilities is overseeing the capital improvement program for the City of Concord. What I'm looking at here tonight primarily are those projects, the significant projects that have impacts to the general fund. So what I'm going to talk about here today is essentially 23 projects that are primarily general fund-heavy, that have a cost of $1 million or more. There's a total of 23 of those projects in the CIP currently, so, but starting off, I'm going to give you the analysis and the summary first, and then we'll go through the projects. To give you an idea, what we have currently in the CIP, we have over $580 million worth of potential projects in the entirety of the 10-year program. Of that, over $344 million, or just about 60% of that is intended to be general fund costs. The parking fund makes up about 6.8%, the arena fund a very tiny fraction, the golf fund is half a percent, the airport fund is about 1%, water, five, the sewer about 14, tiny fraction for the solid waste fund, and then other, which includes capital closeout, federal funds, state TIF and trust funds, makes up about 13% of what we talk about within that 10-year, over half a billion dollars with the projects that are in the program. As I said, there are 23 projects that I've considered the most expensive general fund-supported capital projects, they make up a little more than 16.7% of the total number of projects, there are 137 projects total in the CIP, so 23 of those is 16.79%. That is made up of $258,156,930, which is about 44.4% of the entirety of that 10-year program. If you boil that down, again, to just general fund, 55% of the funding for general fund is in those 23 projects. How much have we actually appropriated for general obligation bonds over the last few years? So from 2020 to 2025, you can see the chart, it's been going up. In FY '20, the council adopted $4.16 million, FY '21 it was $5.26, FY '22 was just under $5 million, FY '23 was $7.14, FY '25, $7.8, and then in FY '25, the budget that was most recently adopted here by the council was $10.7 million of general obligation bonds to fund capital projects. The CIP covers 10 years, the next nine years, starting in FY '26 to FY '34. Right now, the six-year average over the course of time, previous to now, has been about $6.66 million. As you can see right now in the adopted CIP, there are over $61 million worth of general fund projects currently slated for FY '26. That drops to $17,027, jumps back up to $41.2, down to $33.26, and so on. To give you a graphic analysis of how that looks, the green line on this chart is the average amount that you've done in capital, in general obligation bonds per year over the last six years. That red line is the most you've ever done in general obligation bonds over the past six years, and that was last year, the $10.6 million. So as you can see, right now, we have a real roller coaster of where projects currently lie in the program, so the council is going to start having to make some pretty tough decisions on prioritization of these projects as we move forward, because I'm not going to speak for you, but I'm having a hard time believing that you're ready to appropriate over $60 million for a single year of the CIP. So what are those projects that are over $1 million for '25 through '34? Just quickly going down the list, both by CIP number and the project name, number one is the police headquarters, number two is the central fire station, we then have the library, the general service department's vehicle and equipment replacement program, city hall renovations, following, looking at what the future for this complex is after the police headquarters moves. CIP IV is the fire department's vehicle replacement program, then we have the Heights Fire Station, traffic signal operations and improvements. Nine through 17 is the golf clubhouse and maintenance buildings, then we have the Pleasant, Warren and Fruit Street Roundabout, Terrell Park, the Merrimack River Greenway Trail, Manchester Street Route 3 South, Loudon Road Bridge, Russell Martin Park, regional Chanel intersection improvements, the citywide recreation facility, and then the final ones are downtown squares, the arena, the citywide community center, LED streetlight replacements, riverbank stabilization, and McKee Square. With that in mind, what I have attempted to do with the remainder of the presentation is give you an idea of what's composed of each of those projects, those 23, as we move forward.
Counselor Fennessey.
Just a quick question, when you were ranking, that was based upon how much they would cost in the next fiscal year, not necessarily...
No, I'm talking about the total in the CIP. That's, you'll see as I go, starting with the police headquarters, right now that has a $41.7 million total cost, of that, 99.98% would be general fund. Part of that has already been expended during FY '25. This is the little, this little chart at the bottom tells you how each year that plays out within the CIP, so there was budgeted $3.356 million previously, so we have about $38.4 million remaining post-current budget in order for this project to move forward. All of that currently programmed for FY '26. The next most expensive project for the general fund...
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
How do you want to handle questions?
Project by project, it's up to you, how you prefer to do it.
Let's, let's ask as we go, just so that we're fresh.
I just wanted to be clear that these costs, and you're making it clear right here, some come to the general fund, and some may be funded by external parties, the state or grants or something like that, so as you go along, you'll make that clear of...
Yes, yep. For example, in the police headquarters...
Thank you.
$41.726 million of that, or 99.98% is general fund. .02% was capital closeout, which was funds from previous capital projects that were able to be applied to this, that had closed out.
Thank you.
This includes the design and weatherization that was in the current budget for FY '25, and then FY '26 includes the construction. Overall, this is the top general fund and most expensive project in the capital program for the next 10 years. Any other questions on police headquarters before I move on? All right? The next would be this new central fire station with a $25.15 million total cost, that is proposed currently to be 100% general fund-funded. FY '26 is proposed for site evaluation and preliminary design, property acquisition in fiscal '28, design and permitting in fiscal '29, and then construction and furnishings in fiscal '20, excuse me, fiscal '30. Overall, this is the fourth most expensive project and the second most expensive general fund project. And then you have the layout of the costs over those four particular project years. Number three general fund project, number three overall, is the library at a $26.085 million cost. $23.5 million of that, or just over 90% would be general fund, and $2.57 million, or a little under 10% would be other through donations. Currently programmed for fiscal '26 for property acquisition, design renovation, the design of the renovation expansion in fiscal '28, and then the construction in fiscal '29. Number four for general fund, number five overall is the general services vehicle equipment replacement program. There is $19.537 general fund funding for this, or a little over 82%. $1.9 million of that comes from the water fund, and then 2.3 from the sewer fund. There are various projects throughout the program here for each year. The, taking out the funding that's already been appropriate for fiscal '25, right now there is $22.336 million to go, of that, $18.35 million would be general obligation bond. I will note that additional program purchases will be programmed for the out-final year of fiscal '35, when the new CIP is put together for fiscal '26.
Fred?
Yes.
Sorry, Counselor Keach.
I think I know the answer, but when I see water fund and sewer fund at 8 and 9%, those funds are dedicated for equipment specifically for those enterprise funds, maybe not called anymore, but, and exclusive for that, and they're self-sufficient.
They're self-sufficient, those are ratepayer-based funds, they're not part of the tax rate. The number five overall general fund project, number seven overall, is the city hall renovation project, $15.61 million, 100% of that proposed to be general fund obligation bonds. Fiscal '25, which was previously already appropriated, was for the campus needs assessment, masonry improvement and alarms at here in the Green Street Community Center. Fiscal '26 is designed for the renovation of the existing police station, fiscal '27, renovations to the interior of city hall, fiscal '28 to renovate the police station, the city hall, Audi and council chambers, and then fiscal '29, additional city hall interior renovations, which also continue in fiscal '30 and fiscal '33. In this particular one, the remaining amount after fiscal '25 is incorrect in my notes, it's actually $14.23 million would be left to go on this one. 15, excuse me, 15, not 15, $12.235 million. Next is the fire department vehicle replacement program, total cost of $12.89 million roughly, of that, 99.5% of it is general fund, and we used $55,000 in this past budget from capital closeout funds. Again, this varies from year to year. Overall, is the sixth most expensive general fund project, and the ninth overall in terms of total dollars. There is $11.72 million left to go after this particular year, and much like the general services project, there will be additional purchases programmed into fiscal '35 when we prepare the new CIP during budget season.
Yes.
So I'll just use this as an example, so here's a good example of a project where, of course, this is over 10 years, multiple pieces of equipment, every single year, as we're putting this together, the fire department works with the general services vehicle fleet group and looks at those individual pieces and says, hey, this piece can go, we can wait another year on this piece, or, you know, something that you may have scheduled out two or three years, it's starting to fail, and you never really know, you know, we've had it for 20 years, it's starting to fail. Based on repair costs, it's getting so exorbitantly expensive, we're going to need to move those forwards. This is, this is very flexible, but just to give you an idea, generally, there's some sort of piece of equipment that's now, you know, set, could be up to $1 million a year, every year, as we're going through this, you see $13 million over 10 years, just at least that. But it does, we look at it every single year, the same is true of, well, roads, we look at every other year for the most part, for the, for the general services equipment, we look at it every single year, so it's not just because it needs to be replaced, do you actually replace it, and if it's on a schedule, you actually look at the condition of the piece of equipment, so the departments work together.
And with this project in particular, we're going to be meeting with the fire department shortly to go over, because there's such lead time needed for a lot of these larger fire vehicles, we're looking at examining ways to address that situation with the fire department and the finance folks to make sure that we're doing this in the most efficient way possible.
How much lead time is required now for a vehicle?
I want to say, if I recall correctly, it could be anywhere from a year to four years, depending on...
Depending on the piece of equipment.
On the piece of equipment and the complexity.
Thank you.
Just a quick push, is my rough estimate like an engine $500,000, a tower $1,002, is that somewhere in there? Ambulance $250, I just want to know.
Showing your range. That's how, that's how the numbers that I used to think about, and they would come to me and say, no, no, no.
So you know your answer already, it's not like...
Welcome, gentlemen.
Hello.
Nick Ostella, Training Officer. So, you're sitting down, that's good. So, we just recently ordered an engine that was $1.1 million, and this is a pretty basic engine, it's nothing crazy. A tower, we ordered one 2023, I believe, or 2020, yeah, 2023, and that was $1.7 million, and the prices aren't going down.
And when do you expect to have the tower?
The tower will be April of '25.
So that was ordered in '23, so I'll get that done.
One of the things that we are doing is there's different ways to order trucks, you can have a completely custom, or have something that's a little bit more economical with off-the-shelf, but with options. We are looking at all those options, we are not a purely custom, we need everything built exactly, so we do take a look at the cost, and we really do strive to keep those, you know, as low as reasonably possible.
As long as it'll fit in the station.
So no coffee holders?
No, we certainly can talk about the station CIPs first. Just a ballpark estimate, ambulances are about four years out right now, the backs of those are custom-built.
12 million doesn't go too far.
Yeah. Counselor, second.
That's exactly what I wanted to say, because I wanted to ask with those 12 million, how many can we do? Because fire department vehicle replacement, we didn't say vehicles, we just said vehicle, it's like, there is some, I don't know, clarification that need to happen here, if one tower costs 1.7, how many are we looking in the CIP time of the 10 years? Because as Counselor Keach said, it doesn't go far with 12 million.
Just to give you an idea, right now in fiscal '26, there's $1.1 million to replace an engine, $70,000 to replace some staff vehicles, and $27 million to replace Rescue One, a couple of smaller vehicles, ambulance at four and five at a million bucks, and 28, replacing engine four for a 1.5 in '29, so as you can see, right now, there's a plan within the CIP, but we're continuing to refine and work with that as we go forward.
This is helpful.
At the beginning of CIP IV, it lists for each type of vehicle we have, whether it's an ambulance, how many years it does of frontline service, and how many years it does as backline, so if it's four years front, four years, then it's an eight-year schedule, so these are programmed systematically, and for instance, for the staff vehicles, we take a look at the mileage and we just keep pushing those back as we can, but the bigger apparatus, unfortunately, as Tim had mentioned, there'll probably be a separate conversation specific about those coming up shortly.
Thank you.
Any other questions to the department? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
They can walk away as I talk about Heights Fire Station, which currently is in the program for $7.5 million, 100% general fund, fiscal year '28 for design and construction, it's the seventh most expensive general fund and 10th most expensive overall. CIP 283 is for traffic signals and operations improvements, again, this is a 100% general fund project, various intersection designs, construction and installation each year of the program, much like we do with vehicles, we systematically review apparatus and signals and other intersection improvements. Overall, this is the eighth most expensive general fund project and the 11th most expensive overall, and again, that's how those numbers play out over the course of the 10 years. Roughly, generally speaking, is between 600 and 700, or 600 and 800,000 with a couple of bumps in there for particular projects that are a little more complex. Golf, number 107, the maintenance and buildings, right now is in the CIP, is adopted currently at 5.995, 4.5 million of that through the general fund, which is about 3/4, and then almost 1.5 for the golf fund, which is about a quarter of that. That includes the projects you see on the list, starting in FY '25 and going pretty much yearly through the CIP, all the way through FY '34. This is number nine overall for the general fund and 13th overall in total. Those numbers are obviously, as you know from last week, going to depend on the final design of the clubhouse and the method of improvements that the council chooses to move forward, so that number of 5.0, excuse me, the 5.995 is likely going to change significantly one way or the other, based on the decision the council makes moving forward.
I just have a question, what is a permanent on...
Question, Counselor?
Yes, sorry, thank you. What is a permanent on-course bathroom facility? I know there are already bathroom facilities there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If you can picture that there are, in a couple of different sections of the course, there are porta potties, so this, what this would do is in a couple of different areas, it would replace porta potties and make more bathroom facilities accessible, in a little bit more of a permanent solution, as opposed to having porta potties in and out of the course every year.
Follow.
Yes, so are these like outhouses, that was like a wooden structure type?
Yeah, that's exactly right, I mean, you know, they go anyways from, you know, relatively basic facility, and then you have some very elaborate facilities, so it could be anyplace, someplace in between, but trying to make it comfortable for our customers.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for stopping.
Number 10 for general fund, number 14 overall is the Pleasant, Warren and Fruit Roundabout, this is a $4.4 million entirely general fund bond project, fiscal '27 for design, fiscal '28 for construction.
Excuse me? Yes, I know we talked about this in T-PAC, is this could, we're looking at this taking advantage of certain funds that happen every four years, we're using those same funds from McKee Square, is that...
CMAC.
What is it?
Congestion mitigation air quality.
Are those, is that factored into...
That is not factored into the way this is currently in the CIP. That is not factored into the way this is currently in the CIP. This is right now purely in general fund.
Okay, thank you very much.
CIP Fifty-nine, which is Terrell Park, overall, number twelve, general, number eleven. This is six point three six million dollars, three point eight six, or sixty point six nine percent from general fund, two and a half million, or about forty percent by donation. This would be for multipurpose field, parking, lighting, bathroom and concession and fitness equipment over the course of FY twenty-eight through FY thirty-two.
Counsel Brown.
Thank you. This includes a synthetic turf?
I don't know specifically if that one included synthetic turf.
This is David?
What was that?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. It is designed and permitted for a synthetic turf field, but this budget is for a grass field.
Thank you very much.
Correct.
I appreciate that.
Follow-up question?
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you for coming back. When we do these, the budget for a grass field, that does not, this doesn't include maintenance?
Now, this is just including the capital costs.
Just the capital costs.
The maintenance would be an operational cost in the regular budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Gill before you. All right, thank you, Mr. Gill.
Next, we have the Merrimack River Greenway Trail. Overall, this is the sixth most expensive project in the CIP, the twelfth most expensive from a general fund standpoint. Almost seventeen million dollars of total cost, six point six five of that through the general fund, eight point eight of that through state grants, and then four point five, or roughly twenty-six percent through donations. This includes a project for right-of-way in engineering that is happening in the current budget, as well as additional future phases through twenty-six through twenty-nine. Right now, this has three point six zero five million dollars of general fund bonding, bonding to remain after the current budget year. And that lays out over the course of fiscal twenty-six through twenty-nine moving forward.
Yes.
So, Tim, the, when we, part of the I ninety-three project, that will not be reflected in here?
That is, I don't believe, currently reflected in here.
That came after we put this.
It did, yes.
So that's something-
It'll be adjusted as we move forward. That's fiscal twenty-six.
This week or next week with the state?
Thursday.
So, so the city council's request was the, the city downtown section was going to be built by the state as the part of the ninety-three project. So I see that would change the cost allocations related to this piece.
Reduce, right.
That's the hope. Next is CIP Thirty-six, Manchester Street South. This is the thirteenth most expensive general fund project, number eight overall. Thirteen point four one million dollar cost, three point two from the general fund, a little bit of capital closeout funds for the previous, for the current fiscal twenty-five, one percent and about four percent through the water and sewer fund, and then the vast majority, a little over seventy percent, or almost nine and a half million, would be through the state funding. Right now, the fiscal twenty-five is for moving signs to allow for free to your utility locations. Then fiscal twenty-seven, the construction of the water, sewer and roadway and intersection improvements. That may move again, depending on the I ninety-three project. Right now, we know the I ninety-three until we find out otherwise later. The week potentially is slated for fiscal twenty-nine, so this is still relatively flexible in terms of where it could end up.
Counsel Second.
Thank you, Your Honor. Why do we have a gap of year between twenty-five and twenty-seven there?
Excuse, I'm sorry.
Why is there a gap, a full year gap, between removing only the sign and when you look at the budget about how much the sign costs?
It's, it's right now based on when the state's funding is anticipated to be available. So we're trying to get ahead of those signs that are right now in the right-of-way so that we pull those back for the utilities and-
Mr. Walsh?
Good evening. Yep, no, Mr. Thompson is correct. It's partially driven by, he actually appropriated funds to start this in twenty-four, so twenty-five was continuing that. And it is time to get that work done, but it's also vis-à-vis the timing of where this project is in the state's ten-year transportation plan, which will be funding the piece of it that Mr. Thompson previewed, so.
So, thank you. So that means, even the year gap, the twenty-twenty-seven, I know it's projection, so if we didn't get the state funds, it might go twenty-thirty, it might go twenty-thirty-four?
Or the state, or the city council could elect to build it without any state funds. So, you know, by way of history, this project's been in the capital budget for more than two decades. It's been continuously delayed because we've been waiting for state funds. So the city could continue to delay, or the city could elect to construct it on its own, so.
Thank you. You know why I asked that question? Because of all those decades of wait.
Right.
Thank you. All right. Counsel Fred, then.
Thank you. We talked about this briefly the other day, the struggle with people that are on Manchester Street to get access to specifically grocery stores in the area. Manchester Street today, the sidewalks stop at a certain point, and they don't continue afterwards, even though behind a lot of the businesses, there is some housing and low-income housing. Does this project envision that we're going to have connectivity with our sidewalks?
Yes, it will. So it will continue sidewalks from where they stop now, which is roughly at Garvins Falls Road. It will carry them all the way through to Airport Road and Tegra Drive. It'll be a three-lane road section, so it'll be designed to include the pedestrian amenities that should include.
Thank you.
Counsel Kitch, thank you, Mayor. Matt, with regard to the Manchester Street improvements, the, I call it the drive-in theater property, but all that, the improvements that intersection will be absorbed by the developer, is that accurate?
So, there's a bit of a race there. There is a, so the developer, the developer's currently in the permitting process for all the land that is south of Black Hill Road, which is their large acreage. So right now, they're developing a TD Bank, I'm sorry, St. Mary's Bank, which is on Manchester Street, and you'll see a Common Man Gas Station Convenience Store coming soon, also further up where the old Vinos used to be. And, but behind there, the developer is still in permitting. At some point, the developer's project will be triggering improvements to the intersection of Black Hill, Manchester Street, Old Turnpike Road. At the same time, the state of New Hampshire is coming through with I ninety-three, and they are also contemplating potentially making some improvements to that intersection. And I think you'll either see the developer go first, or the state go first, or some sort of cooperation that may occur there. But it remains to be seen right now.
Follow-up? Thank you, Mayor. So, that number, CIP Thirty-six, is not inclusive of any improvements in the intersection?
Yeah, correct. So this is really from Garvins Falls Road, the Red Blazer, south towards Pembroke, to Airport Road and Tegra Drive.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Counsel, fantastic.
Thank you. Has the expectation, excuse me, has the expectation, at least in the few years, been that we should wait on this project until I ninety-three expansion takes place?
So, so to follow up on both of these pieces here. So if you look at the twenty-twenty-nine budget, there's two point two million dollars to do that intersection over. It's probably going to be more like five million dollars by the time that comes around. So the city council, just like the Merrimack River Greenway Trail through the downtown, as part of the I ninety-three discussions, the city council's position to the Manchester Department of Transportation was, we believe you should fix this intersection too, because remember, they're going to improve the ramps coming down from Exit Thirteen. We believe the state agreed that they would do this intersection as part of their project. So in essence, you've shifted five million dollars, in my mind, five million dollars from the city's side to the federal and state's side to fix this intersection. So you'll see, when you see a capital budget, you're going to see this all, the next one, you're going to see this all change. And of course, we'll wait to see how the meeting comes going forward. But as far as I can, as far as they've said to us today, that's still part of their, on their side of the ledger to do that project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Loudon Road Bridge. Number two overall in terms of total cost, number fourteen in terms of general fund. It's a thirty-three point two five million dollar project. Of that, about eight percent or two point six three is the city through the general fund, eighteen point four, or a little more than half, from federal funding, eleven point nine, or about thirty-six percent through our bridge reserve, and another thirty, three hundred thousand, or a little less than one percent from the water fund. FY twenty-six, as you'll see, is a pattern. Lots of big projects happening currently in the CIP in that year. And then here's your breakdown in terms of how that plays out. It's a one-year shot for this one.
Mr. Thompson, is this the bridge that the Concord Monitor said was going to cost the city twenty-six million dollars in their article?
I don't recall the article, Mr. Mayor.
I do. But just to clarify, so essentially, the federal government is paying for fifty-five percent of this.
Correct.
Our bridge reserve is going to pay for thirty-five point nine seven percent, almost thirty-six percent.
Yes.
Money which we have set aside for this purpose.
Correct.
Okay, and water fund, because there's a water line there, is going to pay for, you know, almost a percent. All right.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Counsel Kurtz?
Yes. If, I mean, what we're being asked to do tonight is to think about which things we should do now and which things we should move. What is the impact, if this project were delayed, on the federal funding that is accounted for here? Would we lose it?
I love having backup.
This is a two-person answer.
Is it two-person answer?
I thought I might have given a real answer.
Never know when, Dave.
Sorry.
So you all know who I am. This is Mrs. Anson, who's the city engineer, who's overseeing the project. So, Mike, you-
We can tag team on this one.
You want to tag team?
Yeah.
You want me to go first? You might go first.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. So, you want to move along quickly. The project's already been delayed by a lot, and the price keeps going up. And then we just had to go out there and install a temporary pavement shim on the bridge, so we could hold it together long enough so we could plow it this winter, so we can get it fixed in the not-too-distant future, which Mike can give you the schedule on. I think if we continue to delay, you would jeopard, I think you jeopardize losing the state and federal funds. And I think the state of New Hampshire also, this is, this is what's called a municipally managed project. So the state of New Hampshire goes, we'll give you the money, we trust you, you carry it out, city, because theoretically, the cities should be able to perform faster than the state can.
Sewell Falls Bridge is a good example.
Yeah. And so I think it would also jeopardize our ability to manage the project, and which might not be in our favor, so.
I guess I would add the fact that this needs to be done before the I ninety-three project can happen. If this isn't done, the ninety-three can't go forward.
Hang on, you're in line. Counselor Brown?
Thank you. So I just have two quick questions. Does this include the bike and pedestrian at fourteen-foot sections? Okay, that.
Yes, it does. That's part of the design, yes.
And the second question was, what were the results of the testing? Was it, you were doing some testing on the strength of the bridge? I know we had done the overlay, and you were doing, was it radar testing?
That's correct. We recently, yep, we recently did a pavement overlay in the travel lanes on the bridge, and then we followed that with some ground penetrating radar. We are still awaiting the results of that, and the analysis is ongoing, will be for a couple of months, actually. So over the winter, we'll have a better idea of what that's telling us, and whether or not we need to provide some crib, what they call cribbing underneath the deck to support the deck for the next couple of years until we're able to actually replace it with the project. So that's the plan. Follow-up?
Do you have an idea when we'll know what the result of that radar testing is?
I am told from my consultants, I should know by February, so, yeah. Counsel Schlosser. And this is a red-listed bridge, if I understand? It is. Thank you. I was going to ask that question, too.
That was my question also.
Counsel Schultz, Counsel Schultz.
She said that was-
That was it? Okay. Counsel Fennessey.
Thank you. You have the question about federal funds. Do we have state funds that are actually programmed yet, or are we waiting for the state to actually program the funds for this?
Those are together in the ten-year plan. So, I don't recall if there's a differentiation.
You've received the state funds previously, and that's what's in your bridge reserve.
Right.
So that's, so what you've done, you've had your bridge money that's come in, and you said we have this very large project to go ahead, so we brought those dollars to you, you appropriated and put them in the reserve, anticipating this project, because you know if you didn't have the bridge reserve monies, there'd be more in the general fund cost, you'd have to raise taxes more to do this. So it's a way to say the taxpayers' dollars is using the state funds as part of this project.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
The evening looks great.
Next up, number fifteen for the general fund, number sixteen overall, Russell Barton Park, two point six million dollars, all general fund, over the course of FY thirty to thirty-four for designing and constructing the East and West Side Fields Parking Lot and Landscaping. That plays out over those three years in one point one two five million dollar chunks for two years, and then three hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the end of the program in thirty-four. The next item is the Regional Chanel Drive Intersection with a total cost of two point two million dollars. Again, one hundred percent general fund. Engineering proposed for FY twenty-six, and then construction in FY twenty-eight. Next, we have the Citywide Recreation Improvements. This is just under two million dollars of total cost. All of it being moving forward general fund. We had about fifteen thousand dollars of closeout funds applied to the Garrison Pool Project for fiscal twenty-five. The next three for the, next three projects included in this project are the Rollins Pool, the Green Street Community Center Windows Phase Two, and then improvements to West Street Ward House. And then again, those play out. So there is nine hundred thousand dollars remaining in general fund bonding after the current budget year for this project. Next is the Downtown Squares. In this case, we have one point eight million dollars of general fund program, design and permitting for the renovations for Bicentennial Square in the fiscal twenty-five budget, and then fiscal twenty-seven would be construction for those, number eighteen and nineteen overall. One point seven million dollars remaining to be spent on this project.
Counselor Kurtz?
Thanks. What do we need to do to the downtown squares?
This is the, I'll have Mr. Walsh explain this. This is the Bicentennial Square Light renovation. Light meaning L-I-T-E.
Good evening again. So, I want to say, last year, you appropriated a hundred thousand dollars to initiate the design. It's focused on Bicentennial Square. Bicentennial Square opened in the seventies. It got a little bit of a facelift more than fifteen years ago now through a federal grant, a small one. If you go down through there, the zebra pavers are completely deteriorated, need to be replaced. There's been some utility work in the square, and because we can't get the zebra anywhere, there's a lot of pavement that's been patched in there, so it looks a little shabby and not as good as it could or should. The fountain is needing some of improvement. It's getting towards the end of its useful life. So really, what the project would be is, there wouldn't be a material change to the design of the square. We think it works pretty well. It has for five decades. It's more going in there, replacing subsurface infrastructure that needs to be addressed, doing new pavers in the square, similar to what we did in Eagle Square during the Main Street Project in twenty sixteen, seventeen, making sure the fountain's good to go, probably replacing some of the landscaping that's on its last legs and needs to be addressed. So it's things like that. Lighting needs to be improved, so it's, it's a, not a wholesale redevelopment or rethink of the square, but just really improve it, bringing it back up the snuff.
Counsel Fred, then.
Thank you. The city manager had his hand up, too. You want to go first? You want to fight me for it?
Just to show you the condition of the pavers, the pavers are actually, most of them were actually taken from Eagle Square, because they were both done relatively the same time, the same type of pavers. You can't get them anymore. And we saved the ones that were any good and moved them to there. And now we don't, you know, it's, it is falling apart. So it is getting, it's not a safety issue for everybody, but it, you know, we envision it will be, so.
Counsel Fred, then.
Just a thought, given that we put Bicentennial Square together in nineteen seventy-six, if there are possibilities through the federal government for opportunities to redesign the square in the twenty fifty anniversary, if there are opportunities. I mean, I know that there are federal recreation dollars that are available sometimes for infrastructure improvements, that if we just keep an eye out for those, and maybe we can turn this into an asterisk project instead of a general fund. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, and, you know, in the spirit of knowing that you have too many projects and not enough dollars, you know, we have not started the design yet. So, you know, if this one needed to slide a year or two, that would give the staff some breathing room, because the staff is busy managing lots of projects right now, so we haven't started this one. The other thing, Mr. Mayor, if you can, if you allow me for a second, so going back to Loudon Road Bridge, there's a typo in Mr. Thompson's- So going back to Loudoun Road Bridge, there was a typo in Mr. Thompson's presentation. So the project is actually, it's a $23.25 million project, not a $33 million project.
It is a 23.
So, so when you, when you, the comment earlier about the cost being around 26, with the design that's been previously appropriated, the 26 number is actually the correct number.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Sorry, is the general fund, thank you, is the general fund number correct? The 2.6 million?
I'll read the numbers to you right out of the capital budget that got adopted in June. $18,357,000 in change of federal money, general fund money, general fund bond, $2,630,000. Trust, which is the monies you've already received previously from the state that you put in the bridge reserve, $1,959,000, water, $300,000.
Thank you.
It's 1 million, not 11 million.
It's an extra, yeah, an extra dollar, yeah, million dollars in there.
I'm sorry, is it 1 or 11?
1.
1.
Good to patch it now and correct it now, then to go with our mentor.
When I send this out to everybody, I will have a correction to that.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Correct slide 39, as per first note of the... Thank you. All right, we were Downtown Squares. Next, the arena. This is general fund number 19, overall number 20. $1.426 million of total cost. 1.356 or 95% general fund, $70,000 from the arena fund. You can see the six, the five years of different projects starting in FY '26. That is spread out over the fund, as you see here. Next is the citywide community center, general fund number 20, overall number 21, at $1.215 million. Again, most of that, 98, almost 99% being general fund, $15,000 of donations. The subprojects you see there, including the tables, chairs, bocce courts, and cornhole in the current budget, the other projects and the out-years. We have $1.18 million of general fund bonding after this year, still to go on that project.
Yes, Dave? This is a classic would-you-believe question. Would you believe that the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee has talked about this might be one of the projects that we need to move forward with relation to the parking lot expansion?
I would believe that, yes. I would believe a lot of things about capital projects in the city.
I'm sorry, Counsel Schlosser.
I didn't understand what you just said.
The current design and permitting for the parking lot is set for fiscal '26 with construction in fiscal '27. The committee is looking that that may need to happen sooner.
I see, I see. Thank you.
I would suggest drive there on a Saturday morning or an evening.
It's one of those projects that you've looked at every year and said, "This could make, maybe this could wait until it gets to the point where the overflow parking starts to impact the residential neighborhood around it." Because the city council, when they did this project, said to the community, "We'll keep an eye on this, but if the parking gets too much to impact the residents, we'll come forward and we'll do the parking lot addition." That's why you bought additional property in that area, just in case you had to do that.
Next up is the LED streetlight replacement. $1.15 million of general fund funds in fiscal '26. That would be for light replacements on Manchester Street, Water Street, South Main, Loudoun Road, moving from the old metal halide to LEDs. This is a significant cost savings to the city in the long-term operational costs, and well worth the investment. This right now is project number 21 for the general fund and 22 overall.
Counselor Horn?
Do we have any sort of dollar amount assigned to that significant savings?
I don't have the operational numbers, but I want to say...
One of the things we were looking at, Counselors, when we did this, there was grant funding available for this. And before we brought it forward, we would bring forward what the annual payback would be on those costs. The reason, this is a project I asked to be added just recently because, if you notice, each one of these is a gateway into the city. And essentially, when you go through all of these bridges, you're going to notice that most of those lights are out now. And the ones that do work are the old incandescent lights. So it makes sense, when it comes time to replace them, for safety purposes and for energy purposes and dollar purposes, that we do them right and do them all at once. But we were really pushing this project because there was grants out there, and then the grants dried up. So, but we're going to keep looking for that potential.
Mr. Walsh?
I just, Counselor Horn, to elaborate further on what the manager said, in the write-up and the CIP itself, it says the estimated savings is over $100,000 a year. And it says that estimated maintenance cost savings is about $10,000 a year, so there's a pretty good payback.
$10,000.
Counselor Kurtz?
What's the life of an LED bulb?
A decade or more, depending, I mean, these are only on at night. So, yeah, you know, in other places where we keep them on all the time, like parking garages, for example, it's going to be less than that, but, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Counsel Thompson?
We are getting there. We got two left. Number 22 for general fund, 23 overall, is Riverbank Stabilization. This is $1 million FY '26 for the stabilization of Reynolds Road and Tarrell Park, pending the final design on that. Right now, we've got programmed $1 million in fiscal '26 for that. And then last, but certainly not least, is McKee Square, which is a $4.2 million total cost. 840 or 20% of that by the city. 80% of that other, we did receive congestion mitigation, air quality, CMAC funding for that. The city share of the costs are programmed for '26, the state share for '27, and that plays out as you see here.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Counsel Kurtz?
Thank you. Same question as before. What would delaying this project do in terms of that significant percentage of state funding?
Well, you haven't announced it yet, but you got a letter in August saying the federal money, the state and federal money's been awarded. So you don't want to do anything to jeopardize giving that up. And that project's been out there, again, it's kind of similar to Manchester Street. It's been out there for decades, and it's probably been the most hated intersection in the city since it was rebuilt in the '90s by the federal government.
Let us build on what Matt was saying. Because it's a 10-year plan, you have to get out there 10 years in advance to get onto the 10-year plan, essentially. It's very unusual unless you, unless you're related to somebody over there, to be able to get your project dropped in the middle of the 10-year plan. Usually, what happens is that 10-year plan gets too big, and then they have to thin it down.
It becomes a 16-year plan.
You pick up a 16-year plan, and then projects get thrown out. And now it's, so we've been in line for a number of years getting ready for this. And then, once you get, once you get put into a slot, so for 2027, you try to keep yourself there and not get pushed out by anything else that comes along. Because generally, as projects move forward, in other places in the state, their costs go up. Your project has a tendency to get pushed. So that's why, and so we're trying to hold it right, right there.
Counsel Brown?
Yes, so this is, that money is guaranteed? That $3.3 million is guaranteed based on that award letter?
Yeah, we've got a letter from the state of New Hampshire that the numbers are slightly different. But, but yes, the state has said your grant has been awarded, so.
These numbers will be updated when the CIP is updated for the current, upcoming budget.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, Mr. Walsh, just to be clear, that mitigation grant that you mentioned that came through, will that come, will that be applied to the 40?
No, it's part of the state fund, the 3.36, yeah.
Part of the state department.
The 3.36.
The way CMAC grants work, it's an 80 fed, it's an 80 share for the state, and it's 20% for the city.
So this is the same type of funding that you did for Liberty Center in Auburn Roundabout. That's how that was funded. And then it was called a congestion mitigation grant. The problem, the problem was, the air became too clean in Concord. So Concord was no longer eligible for congestion mitigation because your air was too clean. If you had dirty air in the parts of the state, they could get the money. They then changed the program around. Our air didn't get dirtier. They changed the program around, and now we're eligible for those funding, funds.
Too many bicycles.
Too many. It's the downside, aren't we?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, just to round this up a little bit, and following from Counsel Kurtz's question earlier, are we looking at really the McKee Square and Loudoun Road Bridge as two projects where we really wouldn't want to delay them because of the risk of, you know, timing issues and also the funding dollars? Or are, excuse me, are there any other projects that fall in that category?
I would say ones that are right behind it would be Manchester Street, assuming that the state's 10-year plan holds. And the state has suggested to us that there might be some flexibility of actually getting Manchester Street to go a little faster if we're ready to go, which would be wonderful. But just to kind of step back, I hear the council asking for guidance about how to prioritize projects. And so generally, the way we've done it over the years is, we've looked at projects that are addressing an immediate need. There's a safety issue, whether it's for our staff or the public. There's a facility that is so deteriorated, it needs to be dressed, you know, it's been going, it's been out there for a long time, needs to be addressed, something like, so, so things like that are usually number one, health, safety, immediate, immediate need. And then it's been a timing question to the manager's comments earlier. Is there a partnership that's going to help expedite the projects? So the partnership might be with the private sector, or it might be grant funding coming through from the state or federal government. So we've kind of looked at it that way, and, and then, or other third-party funds that we could be using to, to, to address that. And then, and then we kind of have other projects that are out there that kind of fall online behind that. And you always have a certain amount of, I'll call them the perennial projects. You are always going to need to buy equipment for the General Services Department. We'll always need to buy police cars because we go through them. They get used 24/7, 365. You will always need to buy fire engines, ambulances. There will always be building renovations that need to occur. But some of the larger projects that are out there, you know, might be more partnership-driven as opportunities come along. So for example, going back to the police station, which the council has already invested more than $7 million in. That's the other factor here, kind of going to some of these other projects. McKee Square, not to, not to meander too much, but has the council already invested funds and the project is moving? So McKee Square, for example, you already have, the design's been going, we've done preliminary design. We're going to be having a neighborhood meeting, I think at this point, probably after the holidays because it's getting a little too close. But have you already invested funds as the project in motion, you know, will help get it to fruition? Going back to partnerships, the police station, the new police station project's been out there for a long, long time, for good, and for obvious, not for obvious reasons. It's a much-needed project. The right piece of property came along. The council pounced on that opportunity and acquired the property. And then you said, "Okay, we own the property, we don't want to have the property sitting there vacant for an extended period of time because nothing good happens to a vacant building when it's left there by itself for a period of time." So then you appropriated funds to move forward with the design. So, so, you know, that project's moving. And it probably doesn't have a lot of opportunity for bringing in other third-party dollars to really support it. So just to give you a sense of how you might want to prioritize some of these things as you, as you start thinking about how to move these pieces around. The other thing that the council may want to think about, not stealing Tim's thunder as you're wrapping up here, is some of these big projects that the community has wanted for a long, long time, fire stations, police station, library, some of the very large park projects, all of which are very worthy projects. But they caused spice in the capital improvement program, to the, to the point that you now have this very large number, $67 million of general fund spending in 2026, right now. And, you know, one of the things that the community's always wanted to do is not to lose sight of those projects and keep them in the capital improvement program. But it might be worth thinking about, do you want to, you know, give the city manager and the staff leeway to look at some of those and maybe say, "Yep, we want them in the 10-year capital budget, but maybe we need, maybe we put them at the end, in the 10th year." And that way, when the right opportunity comes along, you know, we have the right partnership with the library. Somebody decides they want to gift the city a lot of money to help do the renovation over there, or something like that. Or the police station comes along because the right piece of land opens up. You say, "Okay, we've had this in the capital budget, it's right there. I want to move it from year 10, I want to bring it forward to year..."
Three.
"Two." And, and let's go. So just, again, maybe a way to think about helping to manage all of this. And that way, you keep your bread and butter projects in there of those equipment purchases, those building renovations, the new roof on the building, the new ATVC. So, just, I'm droning on here.
No, I think that what you're, you're, yeah, we're in sync on that. I think that, and I really appreciate that offer because I think it would be very helpful, at least from my point of view, certainly to help to make some of these decisions. If we could have that kind of, you could have the leeway that you needed to make those kinds of recommendations to us. And so, you know, I think that's really, that's good. And I also just want to just, while I have the opportunity here, to say, I think it's great that we're having this meeting, not only for the newer counselors, but also because of that reason. We have, you know, I'm still, you know, since we did the 25 budget, I've still had nightmares about this 26 budget. Have not gone away. So, you know, anything we can do to, to help with that decision-making process would be great.
Counsel Sutler?
I just want to say, thank you, Mr. Walsh, because I think this is helpful when we have funds that are coming to the city that we can utilize right away, especially looking at the two projects that you just listed, Manchester Street or the bridge, which at the end, it's safety-related. Manchester Street is not safety-related, but we, if the money come, why not move toward it? But my question to you here is, when you said the police department, and then you push it, for example, to seven, but then you said we already invested $7 million. And then you were talking about priorities. Said, "Look at what you invested." This is me understanding that way. Already, you invested this much money. So if you postpone it, the money you invested didn't do any good. Did I understand?
No, I would look at it if you're going to start something and finish it. That's, I guess, where I'm, what my message is. So if you're, and in this case, the police station, you've already made a $7 million investment. Waiting longer will not make it be cheaper, and you run the risk of the building you want to renovate, something bad happening to it. So, so, but really, if the council has started something, then it's, it's good to carry it through and finish it if the council can find the resources to do that.
Follow-up?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. So my understanding is, those two are the priorities. What we have already coming to us, let's use that funds while we have it, which is state or federal or whatever funds it is. And then the next priority to look at the list is how much we already invested in a project.
Yeah, so it's, you know, do you have funds coming from a third-party? Are you already investing funds in there? You've started it, let's finish it. Do you have dollars coming from somewhere else that you have, that you need to use? Because you might risk losing them, whatever that partnership might be. Are you addressing immediate health, safety issue for our staff or the public? Or is it a deficiency issue for our staff? You know, you know, we need to buy that piece of equipment because we can't do our job without it, you know, type of thing.
One of the things that, in my previous experience doing capital plans for other communities that do it differently, a lot of capital improvement programs are a planning board document. In other communities, they set a set of priorities. There's immediately needed for health, for safety purposes. There's desirable. There's necessary. There's inconsistent with long-term, there's a priority system that we might want to consider looking at when you're making those types of decisions. And I can share that information with the council as I send the presentation home.
City manager?
So this isn't meant to give you an ulcer, it's too late for Counselor Todd, for the rest of you, or the council, but he's already there. The idea, I'll give you two examples of how to, how to frame this. The library. So the friends of the Concord Public Library are raring to go. If you turn them loose, they would go, it's not raising dollars. But they need to know, is the city council going to do a project, and when you're going to do it, and how much, how much you would like from that, right? The friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail want to do the next sections as soon as we can break it from, we can't, we were close, from CSX are ready to go. They want to go out and raise some funds and get these sections built. So, again, it's, you can do, you know, Counsel Brown and I have had this discussion several times. You can do all of these projects, you just can't do them all at once. And you got to figure out what the priority is of how you want to do them, which ones are most important to you and to the community, and usually trying to leverage other dollars to do this. So, so don't be, don't be too, don't feel too bad if you, if recognize we can't do all of this. It's just a matter of moving, moving some of them along and getting the ones done that you need to get done. We can do some of it, you just can't do them all at once.
And let me just mention that when the city manager puts together his budget, my experience has been that he hasn't felt in lockstep with the CIP. You know, he has made suggestions, subject to approval by city council as part of the budget process, to move things around, I mean, when, when that has been necessary. Always, again, presenting it in the, in the regular budget process, subject to approval by city council. Counsel Schlosser?
I was just going to say, it's sort of a decision matrix, and I don't know if that's what you're implying. you're implying, but that might help us to sort of prioritize those criteria.
I think it's just a, it's a matter of giving you some guidance as to, these are the types of ways to prioritize your projects. Not necessarily that you have to assign priorities through this, because the way Concord's traditionally done the CIP is more of a budgetary function than it is a planning document.
And I'll add to what Tim's saying, and of course, you're one of the only communities that actually funds your CIP.
Yes, absolutely.
Most communities go through this entire exercise, the planning board reviews it, you tell the community all, all the things you want to do, and then it comes.
Then the town council and town meeting don't fund anything.
Because it's not the council or the board of selectmen or something else, they say, well, that wasn't us, that was them. That was the planning board who did that. That's their ideas, we have different ideas. And, but you are actually a group who actually makes things, makes these types of projects happen. You just got to decide which ones.
Council Fantasy.
I just had a, mostly a point of clarification, which I think is right. For all of these projects that involve bonding, we require a 2/3 vote. Is that right?
Yes.
Correct. Council Brown.
Yes, I have a request, and I'm wondering, just because of the situation where we have an autonomous school board, and more than half of our tax dollars go to the school board, can we give them the same presentation so they look at what is, what our taxpayers are facing? All, you know, the, the projects, how we want to, you know, develop our city. I think they need to see what is in the pipeline for us as well.
I could, I think Brian, are you, is Brian still there?
Yeah, he's still there. He's hiding behind.
I think we've, when we've talked, when we've met with the Joint City School Committee in the past, we've presented the city portions of the capital budget, not to the, not to the staff. It wouldn't be that difficult to, to kind of build that in.
Yeah, we could put something together to show what the city's planning for the, you know, CIP plan. Obviously, it's a public document, so they can look at it at any time. But we could put something together that would be in a little more of a summary format to show them, in addition to what the school is doing, this is what the city. But we have a lot of those conversations on a regular basis.
It's the same thing with Merrimack Valley. We'd have the same discussion.
And again. Surely put that on the agenda for the next school districts needing, city.
And this is, again, looking at the top 23 out of 127 projects. This is about half of the funding that's in that program. But most of the, see, most of your capital projects are, as we said, they're smaller number, they're the main, they're the types of things that are regular capital investments that the city has to make on a regular basis. But we wanted to highlight for you now, at least, at this stage, before we start getting into the actual budget season, where we are with the major capital fund projects. The one thing I will say before I turn it over to Matt, and I want to get through the presentation because I only have a couple slides left, what about Memorial Field? That's kind of the.
Thank you.
Elephant in the room. In the current CIP, there is a $700,000 total cost. So it was outside of my threshold, a million-dollar project to be included in the top 23. There are plans and information that will be coming to you soon from Parks and Rec that will talk about the final design, the master plan, the permitting, traffic study, implementation and construction. So those final estimated costs are still to be determined, and will obviously be updated in the next CIP document that gets prepared for fiscal '26.
Thank you. Council Fantasy.
Just a question related to Memorial Field. My understanding is that Memorial Field is one of those projects that can be taken sort of in a phased approach to. Is that how we expect it to move forward?
I've heard rumors of that, but I would defer to Mr. Gill.
He is coming. Do a Price is Right thing, say, yo, come on down.
The question is 100% correct, it can be phased. We did present information to the Concord School Board last, last meeting. We're coming to this meeting in this council in November. And it is a $30 million project that can be divided multiple ways to make sure that is an affordable option, whatever way you guys decide to do it with the school district.
Council Keach.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Gill, do you sense the school board sees this as a priority? They've got an awful lot on their plate.
By conversation with them, they say yes. That has not been a vote, that has not been a discussion. I think it's going to raise to a safety question probably pretty soon. So I think both, both parties would be interested in trying to address some of those issues.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gill.
Your Honor, so, and then I'm going to retreat back to the table down there. The, if, page 203 of your fiscal '25 budget that you adopted has the criteria we use to prioritize capital projects. So it's, it's in your budget, it is there, there are seven different things. Number one, protects or maintains health, safety, welfare of the general public or our staff, as I mentioned. Number two, protects affects, project affects maintenance of key infrastructure, facilities or equipment whereby deferred maintenance would severely impede municipal operations. Number, criteria number three, project results in significant efficiencies or cost savings or for delivery of municipal services. Number four, project better positions the city to undertake certain priority projects in the future. Number five, a significant portion of the project can be financed by outside sources other than the general fund, special revenue funds or enterprise funds. Number six, project results in the completion of the final phase of a previously initiated capital project. So if you started something, finish it. Number seven, and this one should perk up your ears, implement a city council goal or priority. So remember that you adopted goals and priorities back in March, and we presume that you'd want to try and implement those through the budgetary process.
Mr. Council Schlosser.
Could you just repeat that citation?
Yep, sure. It's page 203.
203, okay, thank you.
Yep, 203 of the FY '25 budget.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. You're on your own again.
I'm concluded at this point, other than any general comments or questions.
Other questions or comments for Mr. Thompson? Council Schlosser.
So we've been, I appreciate the summary, and I, it was great. Now what? I mean, so now what happens with presumably the preparation for next year's budget? This will come back to us as a proposal of some sort.
Correct.
Can you please describe how that's going to work?
Generally, speaking, around December, I'll have a kickoff meeting with all the various departments in the city to get an idea of what they're going to be coming forth with in the fiscal '26 capital program, be it the projects that are already in there being adjusted, or any new projects. Ultimately, what I'd like to get from the council is some guidance and, you know, some thoughts that don't necessarily have to be tonight, as to where you want to see the staff prioritize and highlight projects that need to be sooner rather than later, and those things that should be pushed out. I think ultimately, what we hope to do is present a more balanced approach over the course of the 10-year program, especially in light of making sure that we maintain our appropriate fiscal ratings for bonding and whatnot. Those projects that are really aspirational should probably get moved out into the final years of the budget. Those are the types of things we'd like the council to consider moving forward.
Council Schlosser.
Well, I'd ask either the council or the mayor, so how will that happen? How will we advise or come to a consensus around how to prioritize this? How will, how will that work?
Mr. Manager.
A lot of times, as Councilor Fantasy had alluded to, it comes through committees. So the committees will provide reports. So, so Mr. Gill, for example, would bring all the capital-related projects to the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee and say, we've got 16 projects, they're worth $25 million, and staff would work with the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee, come up with what the priorities are, and then that group would actually report back to the city council. Sometimes it's just simply a consent report. And then we would listen to that and say, okay, here's what we think. Sometimes they're right, sometimes they, they're not. And we'll give you something, and then you can work with it from there. So it's really, as Mayor said, it's very workable, it's supposed to be a very workable document. Because general, what I, but what I will hear over the year is Councilor Foot will call me and say, hey, this street really needs to be paved. And I'll say, yeah, but, you know, you're right, Councilor, but no, maybe in three years, something like that. But generally, Councilor Foot is more like, hey, just so, on your radar, put this on your radar, pay attention to this. I'm starting to hear from constituents out there. And we keep track of that in terms of what it is, so then we'll, we'll put things together. So this, it comes in individually, it comes in from the community, but primarily, it comes in through committees. T-PAC will, will take a look at what they think the intersection improvements need to be, where all the accidents are. They'll come to the list, no ideas.
Council Keach, then, Councilor.
Thank you, Your Honor. To answer your question, Council Schlosser, as a practical matter, the staff will come to us with a budget, and as a group, will take testimony from the public, and we can turn the whole thing on its head. So that's, it's not been, it's not, it doesn't get done until it's funded. That's sort of the bottom line.
Council Keach, Fantasy.
Thank you. I was just going to, I think, city manager brought up a good example of Parks and Rec. Every year, Mr. Gill comes to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, sort of says, here's sort of the list of capital improvement projects we're interested in, here's sort of what we think the priority is, with the understanding that usually Parks and Rec gets X amount of dollars, plus or minus. And so how do you feel about these? Do you agree with our priorities? And then there's a recommendation that comes from that committee.
Council Sec.
Thank you, Your Honor. So how about those big projects that we already are expecting some money from federal or from state that has already been approved? We are just waiting for the money. Do they go to committee as well, or those are over now? We just need the money to start the project.
I would, I'd make a decision about whether or not to bring them forward to you, in a moment, to bring it forward to you, unless you can convince me otherwise, then that's what you will see in your budget. But then again, I've always said to the council, it's a starting point. All it is, is this is what, this is what I'm recommending to you under the charter. That's how it's supposed to work. City council's not supposed to interfere with that. I'm supposed to be able to put together with staff whatever I think is right, and whatever year I think is right. And then you, and as you, Council Keach said, you can take it apart, turn it on its head and move it all along and say, you know, we've got that one wrong, you know, we're moving forward with this.
For example, Council Sec, my first year doing the CIP was this previous budget. I worked with the various departments committees, put together that report. When we get down to, you know, the weeks leading up to the manager presenting his budget, we sit down, we go through the project, we make sure, and we move things around in that meeting what he's comfortable presenting to you, based on what starts with all departments, then gets filtered to the community development department, and then moves on to the city manager.
Thank you. So my, my follow-up is just to try to see, because I'm still struggling with projects that has been put up 30 years or 20 years, as Matt alluded, because we don't have the funds. But if the fund is available, and we already approve it as a body already, why does it need to go to somebody else? That's my question.
If there's additional funding required.
We still need to approve the funding, even though the project is something that.
The only projects that currently are funded are those in fiscal year '25. Anything '26 forward is aspirational and a planning tool to determine what you're going to do for future budgets.
Remember when I said it was a wish list? The CIP budget is a wish list, which is, you know, it's kind of like putting together your list for your birthday, this is what you want to get for gifts. You don't, you don't get them until you get them, but that's what you want. And in that regards, you know, the CIP budget in the out years, beyond the current fiscal, current budget, is, is, is a wish list. It's something we'd like to do, but we haven't funded it, so therefore, it won't move forward until we have.
No, but I get that part. My, my struggle here is $18 million that we are expecting from a federal or state budget. We look at general funds, we said it's less than, I'm sorry, I don't have the number, but $1 million something that is coming from us. And we looked at the safety related to this, this has to be done. Why do we have to spend it? But that's where I'm struggling. I'm not, I see the money side, I see, but if we put a project, Manchester Street is a good example, waited for all those years, we are just postponing because we don't have the money. But if the money is made available to us, and the council already voted previously saying that this is what we have in general funds.
So you. No, so.
No, I think I understand your, your question, Councilor. Just because money has been spent on design, for instance, doesn't mean the project's going to happen. And I, I know that sounds very wasteful. But money can only be spent when it's appropriated, and that's the political component of this whole process, which oftentimes doesn't make a lot of sense. But a project might come forward that's 90% funded by the federal government, 10% by the city, but somebody dislikes, I don't want to pick up a project, but dislikes a certain project, and they want to see that 10% city money going in another direction. So that's the political reality that happens.
And you haven't, you haven't, you haven't seen the design of that, let's use Manchester Street. So it's under design. We'll come back with the design and say, okay, now we need X amount of dollars to actually implement that design. We're going to say, great, love the design, go, here's the money, get it done, and you got the state, the state and federal money to come to marry your money to go into it. Or you're going to look at the design and say, nah, you need to, you need to make this change over here, make that change over there, come back with new numbers, and we'll give you the new numbers, then you vote to approve it. Anything that brings outside dollars in, anything, grants, donations, anything else, you don't appropriate those dollars, you can't vote on those, you actually have those in, in hand.
But do they have a limit if they are in our hands? I think my question was clear.
Yes.
If we have some money that is already in our hands.
So say, most of them have like, federal money will have like a four-year limit.
Okay.
So we will tell you that, and then, and then, and then I will bring it to you and say, we, this money is available for the next four years, you need to make a decision. I'll take care of all that for you. You're not going to be in a situation where we said, oh, we forgot to spend that $8 million. I'm going to not be able to do that project, I won't be here if that happens.
I get, I get that, but I like Councilor Keach answer, because it seemed like we have been delaying any project due to the politics behind it. It's not because it doesn't have a good design or a benefit to the community.
Oh, right.
But because somebody didn't like it.
What it comes down to is you could move forward to the now and spend your own money, or you could wait two years and spend someone else's money. That's your decision. Whatever you want.
Thank you. Council Foot.
She can tell I'm fired.
Council Foot.
Thank you, sir. So, great presentation, really appreciate what you did. I was, I'm very thankful that you did bring up Memorial Field. I hear about Memorial Field quite often. I also understand, I think, where the town, the city manager is coming in with my fiscal conservatism, I guess. So, having said all of that, it's a lot of great projects. I think what we need to be mindful of is when we go through this, and I do it on a daily basis, is when you build a project, you build it, and that's money spent. Now you're into the maintenance and operation phase, and that can be extremely expensive. So I think we really need to focus on, you know, how we're going to improve our city the most economical way. And, and, and it's, for me, it's difficult to start building new parks when we have Memorial Field that needs, I think, $30 million worth of work. For me, as somebody that grew up in this city, you know, I said it about the clubhouse last fall, and I'll say it here today, I think Memorial Field for the capital city in New Hampshire is an embarrassment. I think we can do better. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, we're always talking about is recreation, and, you know, that's where our kids recreate, that's where our high school teams play. It'd be really nice if the city and the school could get together and come up with a solution to make that field what it should be, or that facility what it should be. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank you for putting up that slide again there, so I can continue my nightmares and just visual.
Yes. It's entirely my intent.
That's right. Worked, very good, well done. So I think that I kind of agree with, and I was appreciative of Mr. Walsh of bringing the reference on page 203 of the budget, which lists those items. I kind of, and you were asking the question also about, you know, what are the priorities? I kind of generally agree with that, except I think if I'm remembering correctly, number I kind of generally agree with that, except I think if I'm remembering correctly, number five was looking for opportunities for additional funding. Obviously, certainly in a year like this, that, that's going to, or any year maybe, I would say, that, that really is more a little, more to the top than number five.
Sure, absolutely.
If that's a list, if that's a priority order list. I mean, I agree with the, the safety, you know, being number one and so forth, but that, that went at number five, maybe it should be a little higher. And so obviously, for in a year like this, we're going to need to consider that. So I think that you're right, I think it's, as the city manager said, we, we can't do them all at once, and this is a great example of a year where we're going to have some trouble, we're going to have to really need to cut some things back. So I'm confident, though, that, you know, the, the final product that we get as a draft from the manager will be, be something we can, a great starting point we can work with, which won't have quite a high number to start with. That's really what we're looking for. Right? Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would say, adding to all of these thoughts, the other really critical piece is what happens with the economy. When we had the economic downturn of 2007 and 2008, we had to defer our parking program, or paving program, sorry, not parking, we'll always take parking money. The paving program, we had to defer that, and here we are now, more, well, over a decade later, and we're still playing catch-up year over year over year, and yet the parking car, paving. The paving costs just continue to accelerate, we lose more roads per year than what we can pave. And then you add to that other building facilities that we have let some of the deferred maintenance go, because we didn't have the operational money in order to maintain them, and now we're at a place where we have several of our properties that need to have addressed. And so we've compounded some of these things over time, because we've pushed them off, pushed them off, pushed them off, and send, push comes to shove, and sometimes we have to pick the priorities based upon really what is going to be the return of investment for the community, because ultimately, this is their tax dollars. It's not a pile of money we have free at hand that we can use whatever we want. Thanks.
Any other comments, questions?
Tim, could you go back to the slide, or I can't remember if it's before or after this, which showed the last several years worth of capital spending? So this one here, so this looks like the city council said, okay, let's spend a whole lot more money. But the reason you purposely positioned yourself like this, because you made sure that the city's bond rating was in very good condition, your reserves were high, and interest rates were really, really low. So then when the city council had the discussion about this, the city council said, if we're going to borrow dollars, this is the time to borrow dollars. And that's why, that's why this number, which traditionally has been in the four to five million, if you go, if this chart was to go back another 10 years, it's four or five million dollars a year. It's only because the interest rates of what they were, and your credit rating, and your reserves, the city council said, if we're going to do this before the interest rates go from whatever they were, 3% to whatever you're borrowing, to what are we borrowing, 6%, this is the time to do it, particularly with some larger sums of money. That's why you pull the trigger on it. And we, we got interest rates, which, when I tell people in the private sector what we got, they just can't believe it. We, because you've saved hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to taxpayers over the next 20 years. But that's, that's the reason why that number climbs like it did. It's a cautious decision.
And not to restate the obvious, but to underscore that, that's why we took actions like the action we took this month at our city council meeting, to increase our, our designated reserve goal, the goal, in order to prove to the rating agencies that we deserve the AA-plus rating that we have now, which is what gets us those, those, those low-interest rates.
100% right.
Yep. Well, I want to add my thanks to everyone else, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Walsh, for this great presentation, and I think this is, gives us a really, helps us to all get our arms around what we have to, to look forward to in terms of our decisions when we get into the fiscal 2026 budget process. I would just encourage city councilors, if you have questions, please direct them to the city manager. If you have questions, you know, after this meeting that come to your mind, please feel free to reach out to Mr. Espell, and he will get answers for you. But I think this has been a great grounding, and I really appreciate the staff work that went into this, and I appreciate...
So, Tim, you'll get the edits, and then...
I'll get the edits, I'll have this out next day or so.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, thank you for your time.